Down there?
No, they're not down there.
Okay, well, this is yours. Take that with you. Oh, this is the same thing like this. You guys all ready down there?
No, not yet. The one is not back.
Oh, I thought she was just standing right there. Hi, Henry.
Hey, I read you had to stick around, huh?
Yeah.
Didn't you never show up?
Uh-uh.
Really?
Because I should call me at thirteen after three. And said, hey, where's the booth at? And I went, uh, you didn't show up.
Well, fortunately, Steve did come back and he helped Frank and I tear it down. It was like twenty minutes to put it away. It was no big deal, but... Okay.
It took me about that long to put it up.
Yeah. I thought we actually had a cert pop up. Didn't we actually have one that actually said cert on it? It was just that banner?
Just the banner.
Just the banner, okay. All right, let me put this on mute. We can start this. Oops, let me put this on mute. We can start this. Put this on mute. Okay. I did not bring this with me, but I have it in my car.
No, it was, there was one sitting here. There should have been. Okay, Brianna.
One of those?
We, uh...
I have one in the car. I have one in the car.
Brianna? I knew it.
I'll have to borrow it.
That's mine!
I know it's there. I just want to see it.
That's his big shirt.
I already read it. I just want to remember if I wrote it on here.
He also said that the chairman's supposed to go to the castle.
It was the chairman.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be nobody else.
That's right.
So we're gonna make a motion to change that tonight. Only the vice chair goes.
The change is two members that was chairs, not because of both.
He just didn't turn.
Brianna's not laughing with us.
Yeah.
Well, we aren't in order yet, are we?
No, I haven't. I haven't. Hold on just a second. Hold on just a second. Hold on. Are you guys all ready down there?
He's not. He stole my rules and procedures.
I read this and I'm trying to find out where it's at.
Just read it on your own time.
I read it on my own time already, but it's in the car. Okay, all right. Ready to go?
I said Santos?
Here.
Um, and Sanchez?
Here.
Okay. And, um, who else is there? My goodness, I... There she is. Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Steinbeck had told me he would be missing this.
Yeah, he did mention he was gonna be out of town.
And we've got Vice Chair Graff?
Here.
And Chair Camerata?
Here. Okay, item number two, oral communications. Persons wishing to address the Planning Commission on subjects other than those scheduled or requested to do so at this time, please provide your name and address for the record. In an effort to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established. Do we have anybody online for any comments?
Just a moment, please.
Okay.
Sorry? I'm sorry, I didn't... I did not hear you. It takes a minute to bring it up. Did you... I... I don't even... I don't even see this doing anything. Just a moment.
I'm just looking at myself. I don't want to do that.
I...
While we're waiting for her to find out if somebody's on, I think Mr. Kibbit is on. Okay.
No comment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kibbit.
Because I can't see... Oh, gosh. Thank you. Okay.
Can you see the holding one?
Um, okay, so unless Mr. Kibbit wishes to speak on, um...
I believe not.
...on oral communications.
Okay, and no one else is here in the audience, so if we have no one online or in the audience to talk about other things other than what's on the agenda, we'll move to item three, consent agenda. We have the approval of the April tenth, twenty twenty-three minutes. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Item number four, public hearings. Four A is conditional use permit number three-two-three at two-zero-four-zero Pacific Coast Highway in the commercial retail zone. The applicant is a Mr. James Kimi from Fukanoia Japanese Sushi Restaurant presented by Assistant Planner Erica Barbero. Erica, do we have a report?
Excuse me, I have to recuse myself.
Okay. We'll note that Commissioner Dever is going to recuse herself from this item, public hearing, item four A.
Thank you, Chair. We do have a report.
Okay.
Okay, so the item being presented tonight is conditional use permit three-two-three at two-forty Pacific Coast Highway, Unit L. The applicant is James Kimi for Fukonea Japanese Sushi Restaurant. The request is to extend hours of service for beer and wine sales for onsite consumption. The... This establishment was, well, not this establishment in particular, but this location was approved for beer and wine sales via Site Plan Review six-oh-six, or, sorry, six-oh-seven. Approved in nineteen eighty-six. Unit L is within a shopping center that is consist... Consists of two multi-tenant buildings and one freestanding restaurant. The lot size is eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-four square feet. The slide demonstrates where the project is being, or the location of the project. Our general plan shows that this area is owned for commercial, or has, is commercial and has commercial uses. Adjacent land uses are residential and commercial. Zoning is commercial retail, with adjacent zones being commercial, real, retail, and residential. This slide shows the establishment facing south. And then the following slides will demonstrate the entire shopping center. Standing on Pacific Coast Highway. South, facing southeast and southwest inside the shopping center. And then the alley immediately behind the building where the restaurant is located. As you can see, there are, you can see the apartments immediately right behind the alley. There's a six-foot wall, or a wall separating the two. The applicant provided this floor plan. Now, the applicant is requesting that beer and wine sales extend to one AM on Friday and Saturday. Currently, you see the current hours of operations. They are only open Wednesday through Saturday from five-thirty to ten. The requested hours from five-thirty to one AM Friday, Saturday, but staff is recommending that the applicant closes at eleven PM Friday, Saturday, but with the earlier start time during the week from eleven AM and then closing to nine PM. This is generally the typical hours of, of operation for restaurants in the city. We did provide a couple of examples of restaurants that are open late night here in the city. The latest you see here is twelve AM, and these hours were approved by the Planning Commission through previous entitlements. So for our findings, we did see that commercial retail alcohol service is pretty common. There are sensitive uses surrounding this establishment as we saw the residential units right behind the building. Again, there is a wall separating the two, and staff has not received any calls from the Sheriff's Department about, about this establishment. And we, we did see that there is enough parking to accommodate an intensified use, and there is sufficient circulation, approximately two entries and exits into the shopping center. So planning's conditions of approval is standard that the applicant call, make any calls to LESD upon occurrence. And again, staff recommended approvals for an earlier start time from eleven AM to nine PM, and eleven AM to eleven PM Friday, Saturday, instead of the one AM. But Planning Commission does have the ability to make the changes if they choose to do so. So Planning Commission can approve the resolutions as recommended, approve resolutions with amended conditions, deny the application, or provide staff with further direction. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
First of all, thank you for the report and the presentation. So, yes, we will go ahead and run through questions on the commission, seeing that we only have a few people. We'll start on the other end. Henry, do you have any questions?
Just one, just real quick. You know, on item number five on the, I guess it would be called the actual ordinance resolution, I mean. It says, on number five, says that the permit will be automatically be null and void two years from the date of issuance unless a business license has been issued by the city of La Mita. Well, they already have a business license there, don't they? Yeah, okay. A request for a one-year extension may be considered by the Planning Commission. No extension shall be considered unless requested prior to the expiration date. Now, my question is, no, they already have the permit, so that permit is gonna be good until they either go out of business? Or is there, or is there a time period for that permit?
So that number five in there is the standard conditions that are on every CUP, and that's their pure, usually typically for new uses.
Right.
As you noted, this is a continuing use, and they're required to the same, to adhere to the same business license requirements as other businesses, which is an annual renewal. So that's just standard language.
Okay, so it, it just renews with the, with their business license?
It, it just runs with the land until the use is, I think, a hundred and eighty days? What's that? Oh, that's right, yeah, revoked afterward.
Okay, okay, that was my question. I, I just wanted to know, you know, we're, we're, if we approve what we, what we have here, that the, just make sure that that permit does stay with the business the whole time.
At that location, it does.
Okay, that's it.
Okay. Mike, any questions?
Yeah, uh, they requested, uh, to serve alcohol Fridays and Saturdays, but it looks like we're giving approval for seven days?
So the, they basically want to amend their ABC license, so that the ABC gives them permission to serve beer and wine until one, actually, one AM.
Right.
So that's basic, they'll still be able to serve beer and wine as the initial approval allows it, but again, it's just adding more time to that service.
Basically just allowing the option if they would like to, so that if they did want to serve lunch one day. I don't think that's their intention, but allow it.
But I mean, what we're doing is we're giving them permission. They can serve the alcohol seven days a week.
Yes.
Okay, and but they're only requesting two days. So it'll automatically allow them to do it seven days if they want.
So staff is recommending approval of the request except just to ten, eleven PM on Fridays and Saturdays?
Right, right.
And we're saying, but let's go ahead and open up your allowance to eleven AM so that we don't have to come back here if you want to come do lunch.
Right, right, so, but they requested two days, Friday and Saturday, correct?
And ten PM?
And...
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Oh, they also, also had, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, my mistake. Thank you.
Okay.
That's it.
Walkin, any questions?
Yeah, so, I'm there requesting it for the one AM.
Uh, yes.
And we're recommending only eleven PM?
Staff is recommending until eleven PM Friday, Saturday, yes.
But yeah, the Katsu Bar and the other restaurants, we went ahead and allowed them to go till midnight.
We, yeah, we have a few that are until midnight, so again, if Planning Commission feels that's more appropriate, they have the ability to change.
Okay. Okay, Brenda?
No, I think they, they already asked.
Covered it, okay. And my concern was the difference in the hours as well, so... Okay, is the applicant here?
Unfortunately, no, they are not here.
On, they're not online either? Linda? Applicant's not online either?
Looks like it's just George.
Just George.
Okay, yeah. Okay. And nobody in the audience wants to speak on it, so we can bring it back to the commission. Oh, Kibbit, oh, okay. Mr. Kibbit, go ahead.
Okay, anyway, you know, thank you, Chair Camerata and members of the Planning Commission. Yeah, I wanted to mention that, you know, Japanese restaurants, especially sushi, noodles, what have you, they tend to have a little bit later clientele than, you know, some other, you know, restaurant, nationalities and so forth. And that's, you know, very common in, you know, the Japanese cuisine. But I, and then the other thing I wanted to mention, you know, typically it's a fairly subdued environment, you know, versus, you know, maybe, you know, beer bar, what have you. But my suggestion would be to allow them until midnight. I think that'd be well within reason, and there's already a precedent with others being allowed till that time, especially since there've been no occurrences of any, you know, enforcement actions or whatever, from what I heard in the meeting. So I would suggest, you know, eleven AM. I like that, you know, if they would like to also include lunch. And till midnight. And, yeah, I think that would be, you know, a good way, way to go on that, and, you know, thank you for your attention.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kibbit. Seeing no one else has any comments or questions from the audience or online, we can bring it back to the commission for final Q and A, and if not, then I would entertain a motion. Do you have, yeah, so we'll start, yeah, so Henry, anything else?
I forgot to ask this question. You know, you gave us these restaurants here, the, you know, Project Barley and Burning Daylight, and the other bar. And most of those, like Burning Daylight has a very small kitchen, and they only serve just a very few items that they actually make there onsite. Burning Daylight's the same way. They don't have a kitchen, do they? Does Burning Daylight have a kitchen?
Yes.
Okay, but don't they get most of their stuff from outside to bring in? No? They make it onsite?
Do you mean Project Barley?
I mean, Project, yeah, Project Barley I'm talking about. I'm sorry. Thank you for that correction. Project Barley. They do have a small kitchen?
Yeah, they have a pizza hut.
Yeah, okay. And this, this particular restaurant here is, is, is a restaurant, a regular mom-and-pop type of restaurant that, you know, their big thing is serving meals during the mealtime hours, which would be the lunchtime and the dinnertime. And I kind of agree with what our, our Brianna and her staff has said about limiting their time to eleven o'clock, because most restaurants, they stop selling after ten, I mean, meals anyway. And if this is gonna be, continue to serve alcohol, it's almost like gonna become like a bar after eleven, if you know what I mean. And so, and I'm just going by this by, from what my kids say. I've got adult kids and how they do things, and anywhere from thirty to forty-eight, and, and so I, I would think that it would be good for us to, to let them have a extension of another hour of selling alcohol beverages, but after that, it's, it turns into a bar to me, instead of a restaurant. So, that's what I think.
So let me just clarify. Are you agreeing with the staff recommendation?
I was gonna ask a question. We don't have any restaurants in the city that are similar to this restaurant that sells this, you know, regular meals, has a menu and all that stuff?
Yes.
That so, you know, serves families and stuff. Project Barley, they, they have adults. A project, I mean, Burning Daylight, adults, you know, and probably this bar does too, Katsu Bar, probably has mostly adults without children. And this restaurant, does it serve the children?
They do, as far as I know.
Okay, so it's a regular mom-and-pop and adult restaurant? So it's a little bit different to me than just like Burning Daylight. Do, do we have any other establishment in the city we can compare that to?
So it's very similar. Katsu was an item that was brought...
It's right here on La Mita Boulevard.
Oh, okay, yeah, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Yeah, because, you know, it's hard to compare what is considered a restaurant mostly to a bar, which is Burning Daylight. Their big thing is beer. Project Barley, biggest thing is beer, you know?
Yes, so the...
So it's hard to, you know, for us to compare apples to apples, you might say, you know? Where we don't have one of those, like you just gave one, example of one. If we're able to compare them to them, but they probably don't sell, do they sell alcohol there?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, see, I don't even know. But, I mean, the comparison is, is, is hard to do when you're looking at what you consider a bar, because every time I've been in Burning Daylight and Project Barley, it's beer and, you know, spirits, it's all about that.
So in November, Planning Commission had a very similar request for Katsu Bar, and that, that was on that list, on Crenshaw Northwest corner of the city. And then we recently, I don't remember which month, had Katoche, where they were looking to expand their operations as well, physically to the next, next door. Those are similar, where you sit down and you can have a whole dinner, and you can order a beer or wine with it, but not liquor.
Okay.
Yeah, Katoche was last month, if I'm not mistaken.
I just think it would have been something if we'd had, you know, because I'd been in both places. I haven't been in this Katsu Bar, but I've been in the other two. And for me to try and compare it to this bar, this restaurant, it's hard to, it's just a little harder to do. That's all.
Okay. Anything else, Mike?
They are, are they required to be serving food the whole period of time while they're serving alcohol? Okay, thank you. I thought I read that.
Uh, Walkin, anything else?
Uh, yes. I feel that if they took the time to extend the hours and go through the licensing process for their beer and alcohol, I think if they applied to, for a twelve, I mean, a one AM time slot, I think it would be fair to keep it comparable to the other exceptions that we made to midnight. It's their livelihood.
Brenda?
Yeah, um, when we did Katsu, that, it, the circumstances on that were a little bit different because of the placement of it. It's in a, a commercial, busy street across from a retail center that have a lot of comparables. And they were asking for, I think, I believe, two o'clock, and, and we gave them till twelve, because that's kind of what that area did. And the same with this one down here. So I'm not familiar with that. I mean, as, as a restaurant, I would find it, and I kind of agree with Commissioner Sanchez, it turns more into a bar than a restaurant, and that's probably how they got their liquor license, is a restaurant that, you know? So I would tend to think eleven would be fine, which is what staff recommends, and that's the reason why I, I don't agree with the one o'clock part. Thanks.
Okay, so I have a question. In the analysis, as part of the report, it says here, "To extend hours of service as requested, the Planning Commission must approve the CUP to include extended hours Friday and Saturday to one in order for the ABC to update their license." So talk to us about that.
Um, so this was, I think it was eighty-six was when it was approved, and so at the time, it went through the site plan review process. Wasn't the CUP at the time for this item, for this location, I suppose. And so they got their ABC license, and they were able to get approval from ABC without a CUP from us, because we went through the site plan review. So now, this, they're looking to match what their ABC approval is, but the city has first control over that.
Right, okay, because it does say in here eighty-six when they got their initial from Site Plan Review number six-oh-seven, okay.
And, and just if I could ask you, the other days of the week, if y'all could talk about the time, ending time for that as well?
Okay, well, that's all I had. With that being said, does anybody else have anything? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Nobody has anything else today?
Uh, no, not at this time.
I'll make a motion that the conditional use permit number three-twenty-three at Pacific Coast, to twenty-forty Pacific Coast Highway, in the commercial retail CR zone, that we permit them to have beer and wine on the side until eleven PM, as staff recommended.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Yeah. Just like, is, is what the staff recommends.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, I would call the question. All in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are you voting?
If I could just clarify, I just want to make sure something is clear. So they are currently operating until ten PM on the other days, but the staff report does recommend nine in line with other restaurants, so you all, it's up to Planning Commission on that one as well.
So I, I think the end, end of that was the motion for the closing hours to be eleven o'clock as per, as per staff recommendation.
But the other days you recommend nine?
But the other, but the other days were nine o'clock, right?
And right?
They are operating at the moment that way.
Yeah.
Was there a reason for nine, rather than just making it eleven till eleven across the board?
Just in line with the other items.
I don't say eleven to eleven, or ten, I think it's ten.
No, they have eleven.
Wait a minute. Did you say that they, that they're approved to be open till nine, but they're operating till ten anyway?
No, no, they're currently operating until ten during the week.
Can you put that, I don't have that...
Sure.
Can you put it back up there?
Okay, okay, so I...
I guess I'm, I guess I'm a little confused, because you showed, you showed that...
So in the box, you're saying that the requested hours, they want Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or till ten o'clock, and recommendation from city is to do nine o'clock, and on Friday and Saturday, their request is to do one, and the city is saying eleven PM for closing?
Right. But I'm, I'm confused, because you showed other, um...
Restaurants and bars.
Like restaurants and everything that were up till twelve o'clock. Like restaurants and everything that were up till 12:00.
Yep. Katsu was till midnight.
Right.
Project Barley is till midnight Friday and Saturday.
Right, right.
Burning Daylight's till 11:00.
Right.
Sunday, Saturday.
Um, Commissioners, there, there is one difference on this site than those properties, which is the, that driveway behind where the trash is, is adjacent to residential, like really a budding. Um, and so when, one of the reasons that was recommended was noise to cap the hours. Um, but staff did not, has not received complaints about it in the past, nor has staff received any comments.
Right.
On that. But it is, the site is a little different.
So if we continue...
Do you have any complaints, Mr. Chairman?
No complaints, no.
If we continue with this motion, the way it laid out till 11:00, uh, will that affect them, uh, since they're operating till 9:00 instead of 10:00, or from 10:00 to 9:00? What is, what is that going to do?
I'm sorry, can you repeat your question one more time?
Yeah. They're, they're closed at 9:00 p.m. or 10:00?
They're currently, uh, closed at 10:00 p.m. during the week.
Right.
And, uh, staff is recommending a closure of 9:00 p.m. instead of 10:00. We want them to give them more, that extra hour in the day for lunch instead of just dinner service.
Yeah, but they're not even requesting that.
Um, the applicant is not here, unfortunately. I, I can't speak for the applicant.
But they're, they're not requesting to be open more for lunchtime.
They are not.
No.
Yeah, so they...
They want to stay at 10:00 like they currently are, and you're taking that away from them.
So we essentially treated it the same way as Katsu Bar, the other restaurants. And so their request, it's up to you all. We are only recommending in a consistent manner, but Planning Commission has the ability to change that, um, should you see that more appropriate.
Okay, so let's go back over the box that you have on here. Their requested hours are Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, 5:30 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. You're recommending 11 a.m., which includes lunch to 9:00 p.m. those same three days. Friday, Saturday, currently they're opening 5:30 till 10:00. They're requesting 5:30 to 1 a.m., and you're suggesting, give them lunch hour, so 11 a.m. to 11 p.m. both Friday and Saturday. That's what staff has recommended. So would you, would you consider redoing your motion to follow the staff recommendation?
I would make them...
I'm sorry, so we're taking an hour away from them?
That's what this says, yeah.
But, but they're giving them lunch in the middle of it.
Yeah, but they're not requesting lunch.
I, I understand it. I'm just saying, this is what the staff...
But could they have lunch later?
Sure they could. Because they wouldn't, they wouldn't have to request it if we stayed with what staff is recommending, except not cutting them, cutting them off on the, on the, uh, 10:00 and going to 9:00.
I just put out there what they're recommending. It's up to us to decide to take it or change it.
I, I don't know that, I mean, if they wanted to go to 1 a.m. and we're saying 11:00, and they're operating till 10:00, and I were saying 9:00, uh, I don't know. That's a business. Uh, from 5:30 to 9:00, I mean, to 9:00, that's a very short window for dinner.
Right. But that's what they want. You know? I'm not...
That's what the restaurant wants?
No, so the last is what staff is recommending. If, um, Commissioner, if you feel that it's more appropriate to have them close at 10 p.m. in line with what they already are, you are more than welcome to make that amend, or adjustment in your recommendation.
That would be for Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, to keep them to 10 p.m., yes.
Okay.
And then the Friday, Saturday, they're currently open till 10:00. They're requesting 1:00. Staff is recommending 11:00. And we talked a little bit about maybe going to midnight, which would match, uh, Katsu and Project Barley. So I think it's pretty clear in my mind.
Yeah, I, I understand completely what they want.
Okay, so if that...
So my recommendation would be we allow them, they're, they're requesting the hours on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday to be from 5:30 to 10:00 p.m. I say yes, okay? And then on Friday and Saturday, where the staff had said 11 a.m. to 11 p.m. Well, they're not requesting that, so why don't we go from 5:30 p.m. to 11 p.m. on Friday and Saturday? They haven't requested, they can come back and request the earlier opening. That'd be fine.
Well, yeah, but...
They're still opening, they're, I mean, all I'm doing is...
I, I understand that, but what, you know, we're, they have to come back and request it again. If we just, you know, staff is saying 11 a.m., so let's let them open, uh, 5:30 if they want, but they have the option to go to...
Okay, well, that's fine too. I can do that.
Go to 11:00 if, if they so desire, without having to come back for it.
Okay, so then you want to do Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, 11 a.m. to 10 p.m.? Okay, and then Friday, Saturday, from 11 a.m. to 11 p.m.?
I'd like to see them do, go to midnight, personally, on Friday and Saturday, but...
Okay, well, I'd like to see them stop it.
Okay, well, you can do one motion, and we'll see what passes and if not...
And I'll make that motion that we, the condition used permit number 323, they'll be allowed to be open on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 11 a.m. to 10 p.m. And then Friday and Saturday, open from 11 a.m. to 11 p.m.
Okay, so that's...
That's my motion.
That's the motion. Anybody want to second that motion? Okay, so there's a second. Brenda seconds that motion. Okay, if there's any further, any further discussion on that motion? If not, let's call that question. All in favor of the motion that Henry just put on the table? Say aye.
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 So that's 1, 2, 3, 4? Yeses? Am I reading it right? Right, 1, 2, 3, 4? I know, I haven't voted, I'm just saying, I just heard voices. So why don't we just do, show a hand so I can see it? All in favor of that motion, say yes by showing your hand.
Aye.
Okay, so then that's it. So I will also vote in the affirmative, so that would pass 5 to nothing. Is that good? So do you have the times correctly, Linda? You have the times correctly? Monday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, 11 a.m. to 10 p.m.? Friday and Saturday, 11 a.m. to 11 p.m.? Friday and Saturday, 11 a.m., closed at 10, 11 p.m.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, well, welcome back, Monica. And we will go on to public hearing four, item 4B, with a discussion and consideration of a Zone Text Amendment Number 2023-06, An Ordinance Amending Lomita Municipal Code Title 11, which is the planning and zoning, uh, to modify accessory dwelling unit, uh, or ADU regulations per state of California mandate, and finding that the action is to be exempt from the California Environmental Equality Act, or CEQA. Uh, the applicant is the City of Lomita, and it will be presented by Associate Planner Laura McMoran. Laura, do you have your presentation?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Chair Camerata. Good evening, Commission. Good evening, members of the public. So this is pretty much a reconciliation, cleanup, bill, restoration, because on January 1st, 2023, a new state ADU law became effective, which, because our former, um, regulations were slightly inconsistent, our entire ordinance was null and void. So we've been operating under the state regulations. Um, there are some subtle differences, um, between what we allow and what the state authorizes. One of the primary ones is unit size. The state says they're, um, under state law, the maximum is 1,200 square feet. We allow 4,000 square feet, or we did allow 4,000 square feet. We, so that's one, and I'll go over the rest, um, in the presentation. So just in general, ADUs are allowed in any residential area under certain conditions. Of course, this is very situational, this law. And also in mixed use with an existing residential use on site. It is a requirement of our housing element to update our ordinance. And later this year, it's also a requirement in our, um, housing element to develop and adopt an affordable ADU incentive program. So that's our program number six. We're not going to kind of go into that tonight, but I want you to know that's on your, should be on your radar for future conversations. So the main difference between the city's and the state's regulations came, um, and with height. And we had previously done, took some control, I want to say, limited control where we could to help the building form, um, in our city, and I'll show you that to you. But state law changed, and what they did was, of course, the, the 16 feet height maximum, um, is there. However, then they made a couple of, um, options for certain circumstances. And the first was 18 feet for a detached ADU on a multi-story, multifamily dwelling lot. Then the next was 18 feet for a 2 feet, plus 2 feet for a roof pitch for a detached ADU located within a half mile of a mass transit stop. A mass transit stop is not just any regular bus stop. It is a specific, um, uh, public transit stop that is defined in the Public Resources Code. It must have 15-minute intervals at, um, peak times of the day. Then the last change was, um, the height could be up to 25 feet or the district's height if lower for an ADU attached to the primary dwelling unit. And so what that gives us is the window to stick with our, um, height variation permit, which was part of our former ordinance too, for the properties south of PCH. So this is an example, oh, I want to go back. And what we've included in this ordinance is what we had, so if you look at number two of our Lomita standards from 2022, was the 27 feet for attached or detached ADUs complying with the primary dwelling setback requirements. So, you know, there's that buildable envelope. It's not just the horizontal, it's the vertical. And so if they're staying within that, we'd like them to use that airspace versus going out and sprawling all over the lot. Um, last year, a project came to us, and they had proposed, this is under state law, two side-by-side ADUs. At first, it was going to be under 7, um, 750 square feet, because that's the threshold for, uh, no development fees. And this is what the project would have looked like. And then they gave us another option, more park, so let me go back. A few parking spaces, right, um, side-by-side ADUs, and some green space. Then they gave us this option to consider. Parking spaces in the rear, more parking spaces than they had provided than the other, but no green space. I, I think of the Sheryl Crow song, they paved paradise, right? This is them paving paradise. So when we changed our ordinance, this is what we got. We got a two-story structure. The footprint shrunk. And they are building these within the principal dwelling setbacks, which is 20 feet. This is their, this was one that I had commented on, sorry, I don't have the final version, and that little note up there says, "Must be 20 feet." And that was a plan check version. But, um, so we get some green space, we get more parking, we get more things that have to be on the ground, right? Like, so we're restoring that to our current code. So up and coming are some changes to, um, state law. I, those are included in your staff report. These are the meaningful changes. And the first two should have no impact on our ordinance, shouldn't, shouldn't cause us to go on this merry-go-round again of coming back next year. Knock on wood. Um, and the, we have to create pre-approved plans by January 1st, 2025. A lot of cities already have this. Um, the City of LA has a huge library of pre-approved plans. LA County is creating theirs. And, you know, if we like them, we can adopt them. If we want something different, we can, you know, start to, um, envision our own for our city. The other is an allowance. It's not a requirement, but it would allow a city to allow for separate ownership. But it's not going to affect our ordinance's validity. The third is to remove the owner-occupant requirement for ADUs permanently. In our current code and matches state law, this provision carved out an exception, there was an exception carved out for a five-year window, and it was to sunset on January 1st, 2025. Removing that provision has been hugely wildly successful for ADU development in the state. And I've tried to keep my finger on the pulse of where this bill is in the assembly. It has passed two committees, I think I mentioned in the staff report, and it is going to the floor of the Assembly for the third reading. So what we have is we've kind of made an insurance policy. We've stipulated in our code that we are going to align with whatever the state says on owner occupancy and ADU. So if we're, if they reject this bill, fine, we're going to stay consistent. If they adopt this bill, fine, we're going to stay consistent. Like, that's, that's, that's the, um, the goal for us, is not to still keep our requirements so we don't get our ordinance deemed null and void, because of things that are beyond our control. So the Planning Commission has three options, of course. Recommend approval to the City Council as recommended by staff, recommend approval to the City Council with amendments, or provide staff with further direction. And I'm here for any questions.
Okay, thank you for that presentation, Laura. Let's start, uh, any questions, Monica? Any questions, Brenda?
Yeah, you said the state allows for 1,200 square feet?
Yes.
And we're allowing for 4,000 square feet?
No, 1,000. Did I say 4,000?
I thought you said four. And I was thinking, oh my God.
I'm so sorry. No, we allow for 1,000. Um, that's the maximum size, so we're restoring it. They allow us to opt down.
Okay, okay.
So everything we're doing is consistent. Actually, I have to give David some credit. Um, in the last ADU, JEDU bill, we, um, bifurcated ADU and JEDU, and there was this little nuanced section where fortunately his fine-tooth comb realized we had to, so that's why you see a little more redlining than you should. Um, if you, in the staff report, last year, we did submit our ordinance to HCD for approval, as we will this one, but we got a written comment back that said, "Not at this time are we reviewing any more ordinances." We presume it was one of two things, or both things. The housing elements, they were going, you know, were on a deadline, crunch to review, or that the state law was changing, and, and they just were like, well, what's the point of reviewing this? In a few months, you're going to be back at our doorstep, so, um, so, so I want to like, thank, thank BB&amp;K for their extra set of eyes on this.
Okay. What answer is that? Nothing, Bakkeen? Mike, anything?
Uh, yeah, I know we've asked this question before, but I just, you know, I'm old, my memory doesn't recall. You talk about certain requirements within a half mile of mass transit. Do we have any mass transit stops in the city?
So this is a really good question, because there are three types of, um, public transportation mentioned in state law. There's public transportation, like an ordinary bus line that runs however infrequently. Then there's mass transit stop and a public transit corridor. It might be the, the exact language. The latter two, the mass transit stop and the corridor, have to have 15-minute intervals. Just an ordinary public transit stop can run 30 minutes, 45 minutes, whatever, even peak demand times. Being within proximity, a half mile of any of those alters the onsite parking requirement. And by alters, I mean obliterates. If they choose to remove their existing garages or convert them, I mean, convert them or use the space thereof. So, um, Mike, I'm so sorry. Did that cover the question, or do you have?
Well, yeah, I understand that. Do we have any in Lomita? I mean, what?
Do we have, yeah. Okay, so, um, um, mass transit stop in Lomita is Western and PCH, both those bus lines. The Gardena bus line runs...
Western and PCH, but that's not in Lomita.
PCH is the 232 bus line. PCH is the 232 bus line, runs every 15. On Western, it is the Gardena line, and I do not remember their number. But the public transit would be considered Narbonne, LOMITA, and Crenshaw.
Not PCH?
PCH is, is a higher level of service.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so PCH and Western are in their, the upper-tier category.
So the one, the one at Western and PCH?
She was saying the corridors of Western and PCH. So one thing that I find interesting about the state code is they talk about proximity to the corridor, regardless of where the stop is. So you have to deal with a quarter mile of just the, excuse me, half-mile of just the line, regardless of whether there's a stop on there. I'm guessing the state says.
Even though it's not in your city?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, okay, okay.
As long as it goes through or?
Adjacent to.
Adjacent to, right.
No, half-mile.
Sometimes.
Yeah. The 232, which is PCH's metro line, has a number of stops on PCH. And I, I can pull them up if you want.
They've got them at Narbonne.
They've got one on Crenshaw and PCH. They've got one at Ashland and PCH.
Yeah, Narbonne and, okay, all right, thank you. The other question I have, I saw it, it talked about separate ownership. When you talk about separate ownership, does that mean that the property is cut up?
No.
Or, or how's that done? I mean, does it become a condominium?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Then they have to have the CCRs and all that kind of stuff?
But this is only something a city could allow as a tool if they envision something amazing. Now, I mean, I don't know if this is foreshadowing. It seems like the state is always foreshadowing something with us. Like, you know, it's, it's going to be a second unit, and it's going to have owner occupancy. And we're going to have a J, you know, we're always foreshadowing stuff. So I'm always like wondering if they're planting seeds. I don't know, but at the present moment, it's, we're not required to do it. And we haven't figured out how to make it work to our advantage. So we're not going to recommend we do anything with that.
On separate ownership?
On separate ownership.
Okay. Because if we were, if we had to do that, then we'd have to go into the whole condominium-type thing with CCRs and all that stuff. Yeah, okay, okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, Henry.
Okay, a couple of questions. You know, in here, number five on page three, it says, "In addition to AV number 976, no owner occupied requirement. The state is processing other bills," which I'm assuming are the bills in the box, right? Okay. "Processing other bills that will impact or have the potential to impact LOMITA." Aren't we kind of putting the cart before the horse without having these passed yet?
We haven't addressed any other bills other than the owner occupancy because that's moving really strongly through the legislature. And we've not out, we've not precluded ourselves from allowing, having that requirement. I'm just making you aware, we're like, we're going to have work to do as a staff when it comes to getting pre-approved plan proofs ready to go by January 1st, 2025.
So when are you expecting these bills to pass?
The owner occupancy, this is this year.
This year?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so we're just trying to stay ahead of the curve then, basically?
Yes, and not get our.
Because these aren't, these aren't approved, and who knows for sure if they are not. And if we make these changes, we may not have to make them.
Again, let me pull up how we've worded it in the ordinance. So I can say we're, we're not boxing ourselves into a corner, one way or other. We're trying to keep some elasticity when it comes to it, either way. We're on that like, we're hedging our bets, I guess is the best thing you could say about our referencing state code when it comes to owner occupancy. The other two are not included in this ordinance. They're more for awareness, okay? I mean, there are a lot of other bills, but they're, some are cleanup, some are this, but those are the ones that could be impactful.
This is going to be ongoing for years.
My, my, my second question is, and this is only because of my past knowledge, and I didn't get to look it up this week. But when did we go to a four-foot setback? It used to be five, was three, and years ago was three when I built my house.
I believe it's always five, but fire code, the state requires us to have a minimum of what fire requires, which for a single family would be four.
Well, the hard part is that when you go to four feet, if you got all, I'm a firefighter, so I know this. Four feet's not basically enough room for a guy to go down that pulling a inch and three-quarter or two-and-a-half-inch hose down a driveway or down alongside of a house or something. Four feet, that's why they got away from three feet, because there wasn't enough room. And then you try and climb in a window that you have access to that is made by code, and you don't have enough room to manipulate yourself around it and move that hose. So I don't know why we went to four feet, but five feet is, to me, is the minimum that we need for fire department access.
Yeah, and we totally agree. That's something that the state has required us. And we're, this ordinance before you today does not change what we are already currently requiring for the state.
Oh, it doesn't?
It doesn't.
Oh, okay, well, then, didn't it say, I thought I read four feet in here.
It is. That's the ADU law, and that's required by state. On the single-family house, we require five feet. So our hands are tied on the four-foot setback.
It was a bare three feet, it just, it was virtually impossible. And five feet was, made it nicer, you know, to be able to maybe lay down in between houses and stuff like that, you know? Fences and whatnot. Okay, so the state is doing that to us. Okay, what was my other question? Oh, the property south of PCH, it says in here that they're not going to be affected. No, some of this stuff you put up here, is that going to affect anything south of PCH?
Every residential area in the city of LOMITA is allowed to have an ADU and a JEDU under certain circumstances, right? But what happens is with height, the state has this number three, it says, it says 25 feet or district's height if lower for an ADU attached to the primary dwelling unit. So how we're interpreting that is we can still apply the view-protection ordinance because the, although it's, the district is still R1. We have, our height varies from 16 feet, 16 feet is by right. And, and, but it's, could be up to 27 feet south of PCH.
And that's still in effect, right? It's still, that hasn't changed. Okay, I think that was my only two questions. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to just defer to David for a second. Do you have any comments since you fine-tooth comb the ordinance?
No, no comments. Yeah, I agree with Laura's presentation.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, we will turn this over to Madam Deputy City Clerk. Do we have anybody online? Does George want to speak on this or anybody in the audience?
I think it's still George.
I don't see his hand raised. George, are you interested in speaking on this item? Okay.
Was that a no?
I don't hear him or see.
Mr. Kivitt, if you can hear us, are you wishing to speak on this matter? Okay. Did he leave? Okay. And we have no, no speaker cards. And we have one participant in the audience that you didn't want to speak on this matter. Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, we can close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Sure, I was going to go one more round around, so Brenda, go ahead.
And I'm not real sure if this is going to affect this vote or not, but I believe I talked to you about the resale of properties that are building ADUs. I don't remember. We're having an issue with the resale of those homes that have an ADU on the property. Lenders and banks are looking at that as, as two-on-a-lot. They won't, it's an R1 lot, and they won't finance when it has an ADU in the back under some circumstances. And I don't want to get us into a bind here when people start building these things. And then when they go to sell their property, they can't sell it because it's an R1 and it has two properties on it, especially when that second owner occupancy thing goes through. And, and I know that our wonderful politicians have thought this all out. But in the real world, I mean, I, I've seen it in other cities so far that they've been doing these additional units for a lot, a long time, and everybody else is just kind of jumping on the bandwagon. But it could be a real legal issue, not only for the homeowner who can't sell their R1 lot because it's now an R2 and not zoned that way. Have we taken any of that into consideration? Or have we heard anything from, because I know we don't have a whole lot of them yet?
Yeah, Commissioner, members of the commission, I haven't heard that particular. Definitely something to be aware of. I suppose what we could do as staff is just sort of mention it to applicants to let them know that this, you know, may be an issue. From my perspective, it's not really a city issue. It's more of a, it's more of a private matter between the banks and, and the homeowners. But it's definitely something that staff can make people aware of.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up. Like I said, I don't want to get us into a big old hole that we can't get out of by, by making these decisions. And then once they start building and people are moving and coming and going, it becomes an issue.
Yeah, on, on this matter, you know, the city doesn't really have any discretion. And there are consequences for the city not having a compliant ordinance. So it's a little bit of above our pay grade on that particular issue. But thank you for bringing.
No problem.
Monica, anything else? Joaquin? Mike? Henry?
This stuff, and I'm not speed on some of it. But on this one page, page two, you talk about the housing element. You talk, says it directs the city to create incentives for increasing ADU production. Such ideas will be discussed during the general plan and comprehensive zone code update, along with density bonus initiatives and lot consolidation initiatives. Can I get some information on what that exactly means so that I have it in my head?
Yeah, so that was one of the 30, those three, excuse me, are three of the 31 programs that on December 20th, City Council and Planning Commission, there's a recent one. They, it's officially now the certified housing element, including those three. And those are, they're all incentives. So what can the city do to improve, to increase and improve really the development of them? Keeping like, you know, long-term development of the city in mind. And so the next item actually was going to discuss that kickoff that just began. We have, well, I'll wait to talk more about it. But staff, we decided not to include that part of the program in this ordinance now because we'll, we'll let the consultant, we'll get to it, you know what I mean?
Sounds good. All right, thanks. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else has any comments, I have one small, quick little comment. And it's more of a note on page three of 10 in your red line. Because I noticed it in your analysis and presentation. And I wanted to make sure it wasn't in there, but it is. You've got the very top paragraph where it talks about ADU size, proposed existing single-family. Item 1234, ADU maintains setbacks of four feet. You're going to make that either feet or foot.
Oh, I see.
Because you got a combination of, and I don't know what, fiat, fiat feet? You got the feet and the foot in there. So I just want to point that out. So if this gets printed, it's not, it's not a typo going forward. Because you got feet and foot all in the same word, so that's a great word, fiat. Other than that, other than that, I will bring it back to the commission for a vote. So I would like to entertain a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve, to recom, is it recommend? Recommend to the City Council approval of the zoning text amendment number 2023-06 as, as so presented.
Second. Okay, so it was a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? If not, it carries six to zero, so we are good with that one. Okay. Item number five, scheduled matters. A communication regarding City Council actions. Presume.
So.
You have something?
So we placed on your desks the quarterly update. You remember we did one three months ago? I, it's printed out here for you. It'll be on the monthly update to council next week, and it is already online on our website. So you'll see some updates on there. Very exciting stuff going on around the city. The other big news is that today was the kickoff for the general plan update. Six days ago, City Council selected de novo planning group with, they have, I think, eight, some, eight or nine subconsultants for the different elements of the general plan for this two-to-three-year project that the cities are excited to undergo because it was last updated 25 years ago. So I know I've presented that thing to death, so I'm not going to go into too much detail. But we did release the G-PAC applications at the same time that we released the applications for the other boards and commissions that are up June 1st. And so those applications are not due till after they select the chair people, or not chair people, the board members. And so they're actually due May 24th because commissioners and council members have their own role. So if you're on the council or commission, you wouldn't be on G-PAC. But if you're on the other boards, traffic, safety, whatever, the other, all of the other boards, you can be on the G-PAC. And so those dates, those meetings are going to be for the next eight months on the second Tuesday of the month here. About two hours each, try to get like 5:30, I believe. And we hope that you know people who can be a part of that because City Council will select the G-PAC on June 6th, along with a consultant.
So you're saying that Commissioner and Planning Commissioners? And City Council members cannot be a part of G-PAC?
That's right, because you have your own role in decision-making. And so G-PAC, they're an advisory. You all make an actual motion. You all are passing it to council.
Right, that's what we understood. And I wanted to make sure that we understood that completely because I think some people might have had an interest. But knowing that we have a decision role, or a role in the decision-making, then that makes sense. And I know that disappoints a few people. But, but do thank you for the quarterly report. This is very nice, very nicely presentation.
You said this is on the website?
It is.
Okay.
Sweet.
Okay. Any other staff announcements under item number six? I'll take that as a no. Any Planning Commissioner items? We'll start off with Monica, anything?
Do we have an answer from last month regarding that chart? And how they divided districts up? And if nobody's, did we find out anything?
Sorry, Commissioner Dever, I have not, have an answer to that, but let me look into that, and I will get back to you ASAP. Thank you for reminding me on that.
You're welcome. Also, do we know what kind of grocery outlet is going on PCH that's on here, that's on administrative review?
That's the name of it, grocery outlet. I know there's one, I think, on aviation in North Redondo.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So this, this is going to go where the big lots was?
Most of the space, they're creating a second unit out of it.
Okay, good.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Brenda? Any items? Joaquin? Mike?
Yeah, just on that grocery outlet, it's administrative review. So that is, that is approved by, by the Planning Department.
Right, lieutenant improvements, they're ministerial.
That's all I have.
Henry, anything?
I got a question. When we, when they talked about eliminating the economic element from the general plan, who made that decision?
It's not a decision that has been made. It was just an option for the consultant if they'd like to tie it into each element or have it separate on its own. There's not been a decision made.
So there hasn't been a decision. So there was, it wasn't somebody that decided to eliminate it?
No, that's, that has not happened.
That's all I wanted to know. Thanks.
Okay, I have two, two items, or three again. First of all, thank you for this report, that's excellent. Number two is. Number two is Sunday's LA Times, and I brought it. And if anybody wants, we can make copies, but there was a great article in Sunday's Times about how to hire the right contractor for your especially dwelling unit. So if you guys want a copy of it, I can give it to you. It's got a lot of good information in it. It's just information to have in your head when people come to the counter and, you know, like Brenda was mentioning about the financing and things like that. So it's just something that I think is just another tool in the toolbox to use. So if anybody wants, we can make a copy afterwards and you guys can take that. The only other comment, I don't know if anybody else has noticed this, but there's been, I know this is probably not the forum, but I'll just make it quick. There's been a real uptick in graffiti in the city. A lot along PCH from Western up, a lot along Lomita, from Western up to, to Eshelman and Narbonne. There's a lot of it over by Crenshaw and Lomita now on some of those buildings. So I didn't know if you want to pass it up to chart to somebody at Public Works?
Yeah, and we've noticed that as well in my monthly report to City Council. We report back on how much each month we are abating graffiti-wise. Now that we have, in December, City Council approved a part-time code enforcement officer in addition to our existing one officer.
Right, right.
And since then, we've been able to tackle more.
So the .5 new officer has helped out?
Sure has, and we see that number going up. But I do encourage you and anyone else, if you see any, send it to the code enforcement email address. I think it's codeenforcement@lomitacity.com and we'll get it taken care of.
Okay, all right, perfect, thank you.
I'm sorry, I have one, I have one thing more.
Oh.
Just curious, what did they turn off the sound in the lobby when you were recusing out there? You can't hear anything.
When do they or did they?
They used to be able to hear the whole proceedings out there in the lobby.
I don't know, is that something technical with the new setup here?
That's all I could hear, you know, because it, you know. So when did they turn it off?
I don't know, is, is JP back there?
You sit there watching to figure out when it ends and-
Oh, you got to give, somebody got to give you the high sign over here?
Yeah, so I was just curious when that changed.
Maybe he knows.
Maybe it's stuck in the new system.
Maybe they didn't plug it back in.
That's true.
I'm going to defer to you, yeah. Because, hey JP, question. Monica had to recuse herself for an item and normally when you do recuse, you can hear the discussion in the lobby. She said it was no discussion, you couldn't hear anything out in the lobby. Do you know if?
Uh, we can actually turn on the microphone in the lobby. We do keep it turned off only because of people coming in and out. But if we need to, we could turn that one on. As far as the volume in here, we do purposely keep it lower so it doesn't pick up some feedback. That's why we're always turning your guys' mics off every now and then. But we can definitely raise it a little bit, especially if staffers are speaking and you can't hear them. We can definitely bump it up a little more.
No, it was actually more in the, in the lobby. She said you couldn't hear anything. Normally you could hear the audio out there.
Ah, that was a very good point. We, that, we'll take responsibility for that. We do have the option to, we should have turned that on.
Okay, so we just got to plug it back in. Yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely. My apologies.
Just plug it back in.
We'll make it happen.
Thank you so much for that explanation, JP.
If I may, it was, it was, it was turned off because when I sat out there for meetings or if Kathleen was in her office, I was, I'm hearing the meeting sort of-
It was getting too, yeah, too distracting.
It was quite loud. So I would hear it there and then I'd hear it on Zoom.
We'll make a mental note if anybody else recuses. I'll make sure that we get the volume back on the lobby.
It was for sanity keeping-
Sorry about that, Monica. Okay, was that everything you had? Anything else for you? Okay, Brenda, anything? Okay, Joaquin?
Ready to go.
Okay, Mike?
Thank you for the rules and procedures.
I will say the same, thank you, Linda, she gave me my copy earlier. But the one comment that I would make that we actually talked about at the last meeting was, do we have to send people to the council meeting? And this says yes, says the chair and the vice chair. And yet, and yet, we've been doing a little different.
I respectfully-
Well, we already asked for it to be, but, but-
But I wanted to let you know that, thank you for bringing that document to us so that we could take it from there.
Now, do we, excuse me, do we need to request it be put on agenda to talk about it? Talk about this at the next-
I made the note and I'll bring it up to the city manager. I actually already had brought it up to him and he noted that whatever is decided would be the requirement for all boards, not just planning commission. We want to stay the same. And also in our discussions, we believe it's a requirement in there before we posted these online so you can watch them at any point. This was back before those abilities, so that's probably, it's probably just an antiquated requirement.
So first, one, we're going to talk about it and two, we're going to find out whether or not it is a state requirement or any specific requirement that says we have to do it.
It is not, right?
No, there may be times when, you know, we, a lot of us can't make it for whatever reason. So we would have to send, say, Henry every time.
But we would have, City Council would be- Right, exactly.
That's right.
That's right.
Yeah. Not that you've not been to a few council meetings yourself, of course, but-
Okay, that's what I had.
Anything else? Okay, Henry, anything? All right, great. Let's see, well, then we're down to item seven about attending council meetings.
You and I have to go.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, June 6th and June 20th. I'll, I'll take a hand for anybody at this point, if anybody wants to volunteer. I don't know what my schedule looks like, so I, without saying yea or nay.
I know, I can't.
They're Tuesdays, right?
Tuesday, I wouldn't know.
Oh, Tuesday, June, June, June 6th and, and June 20th. I won't promise it, but I might be able to make June 6th. But I'm not saying for sure, I'll have to look at my other calendar.
Just put your computer on record and record it from June 20th.
Okay, so Mike says he can do the 6th and the 20th. Okay. No, he doesn't, no, he's backed out, he's done. Okay, with that, no other items, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Second, the meeting adjourned at 6, 7:17. Thank you.